Welcome everyone to the zoning board of adjustments for the town of Barrington's September 21st meeting. Would I have you all stand should you choose to and participate in pleasurable leisure? A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And. We are going to be appointing our alternate Andrea Lord of Pride to a regular voting member tonight. So Mr. Park, can I have a roll call beginning with you?
I abstain.
I really do need a roll call so that people who are just listening can hear you.
Are you doing a roll call?
Um, yeah.
Are you really going to abstain?
Leave it up to you, Liam.
This is okay.
I have a right to vote.
Okay, I, I, I vote yes.
I second it.
Oh, we're making a motion.
We're doing a roll call.
Oh, okay.
We're not voting on anything, we're just.
If people listen on the phone and just need a roll call, they're present, Mr. Park.
Present.
I'm present.
Present.
I'm confused.
Mr. Bailey and Tracy Harder-Hop all present. And we have our zoning administrator, John Hawkins, present and our town planner as well as our legal of representation. So the night before you is a public hearing action item that has been continued. In six times, it is variance 121 dash 30 GR dash 22 VAR. There's been a request to continue again this particular application. I'll give a quick synopsis, there's a request by the applicant for variance for article four, section four, one point one, table two, to allow setbacks from two road frontages. Eighteen point seven and twenty seven point three from Hall Road, twenty seven point three and twenty one point eight from Roseberry Lane, where forty feet is required and thirty two point two from one side where thirty feet is required on point two four acre lot. As you recall, it's been continued because the hotlines were being discussed amongst the owner and the abutters. This is the seventh time it's been before us, do we wish to continue it or would we choose to vote and potentially deny without prejudice?
I'm making a motion, we continue it.
A second.
For you is a motion to continue, 121 30 GR 22 VAR. But I have a roll call vote beginning with Mr. Laprime.
Aye.
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 No.
Good.
It's been almost six months.
We expect it to be continued to the October 19th meeting. I would suggest at that time, if the variance is not presented in its entirety, because we are changing bylaws as of the 16th of October, that you do consider what to do with the case at that time here. Next up is a public hearing action item two and three, four, dash five, dash one, dash E, dash 22, various owner TSB Construction LLC. And before we proceed, did we get a signature from the applicant? Oh, great.
And, and yes, and, 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 and.
Very good. Request by the applicants for variance from article four, section four, point one, point one, two dimensional standards to allow frontage of 150 feet where 200 feet is required on the nine point four four acre lot for a three lot subdivision off Franklin Pierce Highway, also known as Route Nine, in the village district of Barrington by Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering, 335 Second Crown Point Road, Barrington on three eight two five, and I assume you're representing Barrington.
Yes.
Madam Chairperson, before you get started, I have a conflict and I need to recuse.
Sure.
Thank you. If you want to see the board or authority, three, that you got five members, I would give you majority of three. So when the zone going to still be there, showing a three. The only point is the members of the board through the planning board, some, I'm sure you have members present, but to hear is the majority of the three other calls, or is it the two and that three numbers are one, and there's a five, still be three. Thank you for the clarification.
So we're recording without audio or anyone? Clear touchscreen? I mean, we're still recording, your sound's being picked up, there's just no. You guys want them? There we go. So we just need clarification from the owner and TSB Construction LLC that it's okay to proceed with one refused member leaving with four, you'd be three of the four to vote in favor of four. I am reporting there are those actions to take place, is that okay?
The applicant has stated that that is okay.
Very good. Okay, if you could please share with us your reasons, the five reasons, the five reasons that you presented.
Absolutely, Madam Chairperson. First off, my name is, is Ken Berry, Kenneth Berry. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of New Hampshire. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Hampshire. And I'm, I'm here this evening representing our operations manager, Christopher Berry, who prepared the documentation that was presented to the board. And unfortunately, he is, I think he had three meetings he was supposed to be at tonight. So you'll have to please bear with me while I, I read the presented information. Madam Chair and members of the Barrington zoning board of adjustment.
Julie or Julie and try other.
Sorry. On behalf of the owner and applicant TSB Construction LLC, Berry Surveying and Engineering is applying for a variance to chapter four point one point one minimum standards, table two, dimension standards in the village district to allow a building lot to contain frontage of less than 200 feet while contained in a back lot subdivision. So basically, the, the pork chops or the back lots are being proposed by right, and that leaves 150 feet of frontage, so we are asking for the variance for that, that reduced frontage. The site is located on tax map two thirty four lot twenty five dash one, which is frontage on New Hampshire Route nine, nine, commonly known as Franklin Pierce Highway. The property is located in the village district. The site underwent a major subdivision application in the past where the frontage on Meeting House Road was developed into a standard house lot, standard house lots, with this remaining piece having excess in frontage on Route nine. The frontage is 202 feet in the existing condition. In the past, the owners contemplated a larger scale project on this side of the property. The village district allows for single family development, duplex development, and single family attached style development. The owner has looked at townhouses to be developed into the hillside in the past and went so far as to have a design review hearing with the planning board on this matter. The site is nine point four four acres in size and could be developed into nine townhouse units with a private roadway into the site and would be supported by well and subject systems. In response to the concerns voiced by the abutter, abutters at the design review hearing, the owner is looking to simply subdivide the parcel into the back lot or, using the back lot ordinance to create three new lots. The subdivision would create two new lots with 25 foot necks down to Route nine as the ordinance allows, and the remaining lot would contain 150 feet more or less of frontage. All three of the lots would take access from a single shared driveway, which would be located within the neck portion of the back lots as the ordinance encourages and requires of the back lots. A special exception is simultaneously being requested in conjunction with this application for the lot shown as lot twenty five dash one. It takes access from a driveway not over the proposed frontage. Item number one, special considerations exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law. The special condition of this parcel is that it lacks a total of 250 linear feet of frontage along Franklin Pierce Highway, but otherwise meets the criteria for a back lot subdivision. The parcel is large as compared to others in the immediate area and contains the least amount of frontage of all immediate abutting parcels as well as others in the area. The denial of the variance creates an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, whereas if it were not for the granting of the variance, the applicant could develop the site in a manner congruent with all abutting lots while keeping the abutting concern for a larger development in mind. This proposal is a reasonable use under the zoning ordinance, whereas the site could be developed in a more intense manner with the same road configuration and building placement. To reduce the impact on the land, which is steep, reduce stormwater concerns, traffic concerns, and building massing concerns for the most abutting structure and landowner, the applicant has chosen to build out three lots with two single family homes and one proposed duplex home. This reduced unit requires a subdivision with one lot having less than the required 200 feet of frontage, which is a reasonable request when considering the alternative style development would not require any more or less frontage than that is, which is provided for the subdivision. The letter that was provided to you has got a, a copy of the tax map attached to it at that point. Item number two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is to allow for reasonable development, which has spacing that is controlled through the use of frontage requirements. Frontage is a land use record, land use control that creates uniformity and also limits driveway curb cuts to a reasonable number within the rural character of the community. In this case, the subdivision, but for the variance, achieves the spirit, whereas it proposes a reduce, a reduction in density, which is spread out on the site while keeping one driveway and one curb cut. Number three, granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. The proposed project contemplates a use that is otherwise permitted in the underlying zone and is in keeping with all surrounding uses. The applicant is proposing this keeping in mind the concerns of the abutting landowners during the prior site review hearing with the planning board and would submit that this style of development does nothing to diminish property values and is superior to the development of larger density that is otherwise permitted. Item number four, granting the variance would do substantial justice. The variance would do substantial justice in that it allows for an orderly, low intensive, intensity development to take place on a larger parcel of land that has been provided input by the planning board and surrounding property owners. The litmus test is usually touted as the gain to the applicant outweighs the loss to the community and ordinance. However, in this case, the gain to the applicant is in line with the abutting concerns and thus substantial justice is achieved. Item number five, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. The public interest as stated in section 1.8 of the ordinance is to provide for development that is in harmony with the current vision and objectives of the master plan. The request for variance is an innovative land use request that allows for the applicant to develop the site within the confines of the larger vision, but also through the lens of the abutting landowners. Though larger density is allowed in this underlying zone and currently needed on a larger scale, the applicant is providing a smaller scale project in keeping with other objectives and allowances in the underlying zone, while considering the needs of the immediate abutting landowners. Public interest is met in this particular case. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Was authored and signed by Christopher R. Berry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go to anyone that would like to speak potentially in opposition to this, is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of it? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the variant?
Hi, my name is Susan Druio.
Thank you. Any, yeah, address, please.
Seven fifty seven Franklin Pierce Highway, I'm the abutting person. So our major concern is cutting across that post road to access Route nine. Will we still have access to our property via that road or will it be cut off?
There is a, a strip of land that is listed on the subdivision plan as possibly having rights by others. We have not, in our title examination, determined who does or does not have access to that strip of land. The driveway that is being proposed across there will, to my knowledge and belief, allow continued access if somebody had access off of that post road to, to use it.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to share?
No, I understand that there's going to be progress and they do have a buildable lot directly behind us. I would just like some consideration as for the distance and also some kind of a, you know, fence between our property and theirs, because it, it seems to be very, very close, the lot itself. I mean, well within 50 feet of where we're sitting right now.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Mr. David Andrews, please, as you approach the podium.
I'm Lisa Smith, seven sixty one Franklin Pierce Highway. Um, I live right next to them, so this would be potentially right directly behind my house as well. And so my concern is with the steepness where they're considering building, the potential runoff erosion coming down to my property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? David Andrews, please, sir.
Hi, Gerald Kanzari, seven forty six Franklin Pierce Highway, directly across the street from this both project. These people were not here, but with the planning board some few years ago now. And they, they withdrew their design review hearing after hearing from the abutters regarding, in my case, and I think in the case of the Kents, the drainage and runoff issues from Oak Hill. If you people ever drive down Route nine, you'll see during a, a storm or after a storm, the flooding that goes on in that area. On both sides of Route nine, it floods the bottom of Oak Hill Road to the point in the winter time, it freezes constantly there. And the, uh, road crew has to go out there quite often to just lay a bunch of sand down. The church of the chapel parking lot floods ferociously. And they're constantly in there trying to regrade it. The DOT comes in there and tries to ditch out after every storm or during the storm sometimes, just to let the water flow. Now the water on the Kent side of, of the highway flows down across their property to a culvert that crosses under Route nine onto my property. And all of that water that comes down off of the hill now, which is a lot, flows through that culvert onto my property, it floods my property, it floods under the barn in the corner of Cape Road, which is mine. And then finally out onto the Cape Road ditch, and that runs down to a culvert that runs underneath Cape Road to Little Pond on the other side behind the, the fire station. That water is, and has been for years, a real problem. To the point where it has sometimes washed out Cape Road, that bed. In any event, I made some, some notes. Please bear with me. Okay. I was curious if they had a site plan that shows the sites and locations of the structures and the driveways that are proposed. I haven't seen anything.
So the variance before us is in reference to the driveway, and the location of those would not be required for the purpose of this particular meeting?
Okay, but that does really have a lot to do with.
That would be addressed at the planning board level?
I understand that. I'm just saying that one of the arguments here is that it would not diminish my property value and it would by virtue of so much more runoff created by this project. So anyway, I'd like to see gilting elevation plans, which I guess would also do as you said, drainage plan showing ditches and culverts and the method of, of containing this runoff. A top graphical map, a plan, a plan showing total square footage of impermeable surfaces and curb cuts design showing the drainage. Now, as it is right now with the drainage that come, currently comes off the hillside, that's a very, very steep hillside. And the, uh, the water, as I said, right now is, you know, somewhat contained by virtue of it's a heavily forested area. And so it's got, it does have all of that area to absorb some of this water. It doesn't absorb enough of it. But if you build, put buildings on it and asphalt driveways and parking lots and so forth, that's going to diminish that area by quite a bit. I noticed that it, I think 40% of the property size has to accommodate the impermeable surfaces. I don't think that really addresses the steepness of this. I mean, I could see that working for a flat piece of property, but it would seem to me that that number should be diminished by virtue of the steepness of, of any particular piece of property. And I would.
I don't want to interrupt you, but we are, we're, we're here to talk about variance just for accessing.
I'm, I'm just continuing to try to make my point about the, of the value diminishing. But thank you. Thank, oh, yes, I see that they're talking about setbacks, setback of 40 feet. I believe on Route nine, it's 50 feet. Shared driveway, I, I think those are pretty much discouraged because they have problems with whoever is responsible for maintaining a shared driveway. I question the safety of it, the police and ambulance getting in there and trying to get up a, probably a 10% grade in some cases. And, oh, I was wondering if the DOT had approved, had approved the curb cut.
So many of the things that you have mentioned would take place at the planning board level. This particular variance would be whether the back lot subdivision would have entry from Route nine by reducing from 200 feet of, of, to 150. I just wanted to be clear that that's the one issue that I'm hearing.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You rebuttal, oh, I'm sorry, hang on. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Okay, please.
Okay, so the, this, the site is steep, there's no denying that the, the site is steep. We have done some preliminary engineering work on this, and there is engineering work that will need, need to be done in order to satisfy the planning board in order to show the potential building sites, the potential driveway, everything else. And that, as you stated, about chairperson, it's something that is going to take place at the planning board level. The planning board has very specific notes that have to be put on the plan regarding erosion settlement control, and they will also likewise address erosion and settlement control issues when, when it gets to that venue. As far as freezing conditions on Oak Hill Road, I, I don't think that the proposal on this area, which is downhill from Oak Hill Road and downhill from the chapel is going to have any adverse effect on those particular properties. And as far as the drainage that's directly in front of this property, that will have to be addressed again when it goes to the, the planning board. Yes, the water does cross under Franklin Pierce Highway. And, and yes, we are going to have to take measures on, on this property to make sure that the drainage is managed in, in a suitable and, and method that falls within the various jurisdictions. As, as you pointed out, this is going to be going to the planning board. As far as the shared driveway is concerned, that is mandated in the back lot subdivision that that driveway come out through the two 25 foot strips. And as far as the third driveway access, this would actually, and we're going to be discussing this as part of the conditional use permit, but that's going to reduce the number of curb, curb cuts out onto Franklin Pierce Highway. And that is in fact a New Hampshire DOT curb cut that, that would be issued by them. They are going to be evaluating the drainage, they're going to be evaluating the site distances, and they are going to be evaluating the safety concerns. And that application has not gone in because it is not fully engineered at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any other brief follow-up to the opposition? Okay. Would anyone like to issue any questions in reference to the variance? Yes, go ahead, Mr..
Yeah, I was, I was interested in, can you explain that woman's concern about the, the road access? Because your answer kind of circled by. Because your answer kind of circled, I didn't quite understand.
Okay, well, if it's circled, I certainly did not mean to because.
It might be my interpretation.
There is a strip of land between two stone walls and the possible access to others exists on that strip of land. And our title examination, and maybe it just didn't go back far enough, but our title examination did not either rule out or specifically identify anybody that might have rights to that strip of land. And so if they currently have rights to that strip of land, then that's something that they can currently continue to exercise.
You're sure of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Berry, when you were doing your examination, did you look at the deeds that these individuals hold to see if they did have a right of way to that strip?
I have not personally.
I understand that, okay.
My staff has looked at it to a certain level. And I'm sure that between my department manager and myself, that is something that we're going to have to take up before it gets to the planning board level. Because the drainage underneath the proposed driveway, the access potential by others, I'm sure it's something that we're going to have to address again.
Yeah, I know that's a lot. The butters, has any of the butters brought forward their deed fee to review at all? Oh, yeah.
They have not, and I wouldn't expect them to. If they felt they had rights and had documentation, they're welcome to submit it for our review. I wouldn't necessarily expect that. But it's something that we'll have to take a critical look at, Mr. Berry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. I appreciate you answering my questions.
Nothing this board does affects any private rights that exist. It can't create them, it can't eliminate them. If they're there, they're there. So I appreciate the concern, but nothing this board does impacts them in any way.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns, board members? And if not, I will take a, oops. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to speak on behalf?
I can give you a little history on that particular right of way that you were just talking about. I've lived in my location for fifty years. The prior owner, Mr. Bonnie, one of the prior, used that road regularly to access the rear of his lot.
Understood. So I think just to keep us on track, we cannot deed access, we can't take away access. If it is part of the deed, then it is part of the deed. And that is up to a landowner to produce that in the future, should need be.
All right, my last comment, believe me, concerns the habitat.
Yes.
And we can all appreciate the fact that there's a flock of thirty wild turkeys that live on that hill.
Yes.
They rest there at night.
Yes.
They come down across Route nine. And I'll bet there's one of you that has had to start for those turkeys crossing Route nine. They come onto my property where they feed all day. They turn around in the evening, go back across Route nine, back up into this property and go up into the trees to roost.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think it's called a clutch or something. There's that, the turkeys, that are clutch. I'm going to close public comment at this time. Thank you all for participating. Does the board have any questions? And if not, I'll adjutant motion.
I just, I don't like the idea that they're asking for twenty-five percent off of the two hundred feet for the, that's the only objections I can find on this right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion? Or answer the call? Board for the comments?
I'm thinking. Yeah, I mean, they reduced the frontage, but they did it because they made the shared driveway. So we, and this is, and one curb cut is heaven compared to three. Four, yeah. Especially on Route nine. I'd like to make a motion that we grant this.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a second on that. But I have a roll call vote beginning.
Can I actually interject?
Yes.
So I think, you know, I don't know if we've discussed this before or not. New law adopted recently requires that the board make findings of facts in connection with any motion. It's required for both motions to approve and motions to deny. It's more important with motions to deny because if you don't do it with motions to deny, it's an automatic remand. So with your motion, I would encourage you to state the facts upon which you believe the variance criteria are met.
Okay, I believe that the three lot subdivision would be more desirable than the townhouses he described. I also believe that one shared driveway for three lots is definitely a much safer situation. I don't think that it makes. I don't think that this is going to cause any real change in the neighborhood other than, I mean, it's residential, it's going to be residential. And I think that this is a well-done plan. And I think that one hundred and fifty point eight nine feet for frontage is reasonable, especially when you consider that the frontage loss was used to create the shared driveway. And in my opinion, that's a reasonable use of this property. And it's actually a good use of this property.
Reason I say that we're losing twenty-five percent. We involve volunteers here, sitting here. And we have the zoning ordinances that were voted on by our neighbors to hear. And I think that I still stand by the fact that twenty-five percent decrease is not acceptable. It's how I feel.
So at this time, you have a motion before you to approve the variance for the reasons listed. Findings of fact, by Mrs. Huckins, you have a second by Mr. LePrat. I'm assuming that when she listed the fact finding, that that didn't change her secondary support of voting?
No, I think, just to validate what she said, that it could be, it could be made into a much more intense situation as far as more buildings or more traffic or whatever. I will say, though, that I think a lot of good concerns were brought up, not necessarily for us, but for the future that these people pursue that as well is concerned.
So the motion before us is in support. I have a second, can I have a roll call vote? Please begin with Mr. LePrat.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Based on the information that was presented, we have found in a positive manner to approve the variance. Start to read the number again. It's very long. I'll do it. Variance two, three, four, dash twenty-five, twenty-one.
No, you don't need to. Special exception.
Okay, moving on. I have a feeling we have the same group presenting. Before us now, a special exception in reference to two, three, four, dash two, five, dash one, dash B, dash two, two, SBC, B, X, exception, owner TSB Construction LLC. There's a request by Gattigan for a special exception from Article four, section four point one point two, to allow a driveway not on the proposed frontage for a three lot subdivision on nine point four four acre lot of Franklin Pierce Highway in the Village District by Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering, three thirty-five second ground point, right, to allow a driveway not on the proposed frontage forty-three acre lot. Please present.
Madam Chairperson, again, Kenneth Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering, Lycetland Surveyor and a supervisor here. On behalf of TSB Construction LLC, Berry Surveying and Engineering is applying for a special exception to Article four, section one point two, to prevent three subdivision lots to be created with a shared driveway entrance and easement on the neck of the two proposed backlots. Close to the application for a special exception to permit three lots to share one driveway not located on the frontage of proposed lot twenty-five dash one. So it really is that simple. The discussion that we had requesting the variance by reducing the frontage on that parcel would move the frontage, or move the driveway access for all three lots into the fifty-foot strip of land, creating one curb cut for the three proposed lots. It's a reality that the owner and applicant is willing to go for or go through. And it will take some documents for the shared driveway. Shared driveways are not always the most comfortable. But it is something that is becoming more and more common, especially where you've got highway access that is controlled by the state agency. So happy to answer any questions you might have on this proposal for the special exception.
Thank you for speaking on behalf of this. Is the board comfortable that we do not need to reiterate many of the same points?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I don't want to stop people from participating. But if anyone would like to present something new in opposition to this special exception, please do. As a side note, I would strongly encourage that consider being a very good neighbor to the head of this body, pretty making sure that you get on and off their land. But we can't beat that. Anyone like to add anything new to this particular special exception? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Berry, could you list a special exception criteria? And just illustrate why we're asking for.
Justifications.
Justifications for special.
Yep. By the application. Number one, no detriment to property values in vicinity of the proposed development will result in account, on account of the location or scale of buildings, structures, parking areas, or other accessways, the emission of odors, smoke, gas, dust, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other pollutants, or unsightly outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles, or other materials. No reduction in property value will be seen as a result of the shared driveway to access the lots. Number two, no hazard will be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion, or release of toxic materials. I'm sorry, I spent eight hours teaching today and my voice is trashed. No further risk of fire, explosion, or the release of toxic materials will occur as a result of the shared driveway. Number three, no creation of a traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion will result in the vicinity of the proposed development. There is no change in traffic in this area based on the request when compared to allowing additional units on a shared road or driveway in a larger setting. This project reduces units and therefore reduces traffic in the area. Number four, no excessive demand on municipal services or facilities, including the not limited to waste disposal, police, fire protection, and schools. No additional demand will be placed on the town as a result of the shared driveway. And again, the planning board will be opining on such things as police and fire protection. And again, it's reducing the number of driveway curb cuts down to between one from what would otherwise be two. Number five, the proposed use will not result in the degradation of existing surface and groundwater quality standards, nor will it have any adverse effect on the natural functions of wetlands on the site that would result in the loss of significant habitat or flood control protection. The shared access will not have any degradation on existing surface or groundwater quality standards and will have no adverse effect on natural resources.
Thank you. So before us with the special exception, it's my understanding that we are specifically talking about a special exception for a shared driveway. Anyone would like to speak with any new oppositionary? Any questions from the board? Okay. Comments? Yes, sir.
I do have some clarification, which I would ask for. And that is on item five, we talked about degradation of the existing surface and groundwater quality. And during the prior discussions, it was noted that survey had been completed yet by Mr. Berry's establishment. So I asked Chair clarification on how, with that being done in with a statement number five, how we should react to this request?
Because you are limited to the issue of shared driveway. So will having a shared driveway result in the degradation of existing surface and groundwater quality? Just the shared driveway? And that engineering hasn't been done yet.
That's right.
But the fact of the shared driveway will that, not the design of the driveway, it's the fact.
Okay, but that's why I was asking about the fact of it is because it was presented to us with the fact that it wouldn't have anything. So.
Would one driveway be more detrimental than two?
That's not the question. That's not the question of asking. When I talk about the groundwater. John, I respect you very much and all you think. But I just looking for an explanation on this and.
That's what I was trying to explain. He has a right to put in two driveways.
Yeah.
So he's asking to put in one. One driveway is going to be less detrimental than two.
I understand that. But what I'm saying here is that on item five, he stated in his statement that it would have no detrimental effect on roadways. But in the prior discussions, it was stated that that was not done yet. It was not done, as the attorney has stated to me, it wasn't done. But my question is, is how can we turn around and accept item five as written as to the fact of the testing and surveys that were just done? And that's why I asked you.
Yeah, so I'm understanding this as the zoning administrator has presented it. This will be half of an impact of what would have occurred with it. So the shared access is reducing adverse effects for natural.
Okay, so the statement is made, it's made as is, but the explanation goes afterwards. Adjustment, very much.
That's just that.
Yeah, that's what I asked you to do. Thank you.
Well, maybe I don't need to make.
No, I don't think you do. I'm all set. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concern from board members? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment section. And I will ask for a motion.
Make a motion that we grant special exception.
And do I have a second? I have a second for Mr. Bailey. Beginning with Mr. LePrat, should I have a roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Before I say hard a cough, aye, I think we're supposed to show the findings in reference to the special exception are.
That's right, I have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, so if I could get you to amend your motion, please.
I amend my motion to explain why. Okay, I believe that, as I said previously, a single driveway is much preferable than multiple driveways for multiple lots. I believe any concerns about drainage and the basic philosophy of this subdivision is going to be addressed by the planning board. It's not, it's, we're just saying that we give them a special exception for this driveway. And I'm okay with that. And I make a motion that we grant it.
So.
What's my second stance?
There's second stance, okay. Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please, beginning with Mr. LePrat.
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hard cough, aye. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time this, this evening. It was a pleasure presenting in your new headquarters.
He was nice, I know.
Very nice. You got to do it before Chris. I love that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Don't push too hard without.
So next up, what's for us?
Thank you.
Is a request for a variance, I have the number 118-1. Folks, can I get you just to step outside and speak? Thank you. Variance 118-4-PR-22-VAR, owner Joseph Wilson, request by the applicant for a variance, Marvill 11, Section 11.2. Section two, district defined to allow the section of 53 points, allow the section 53.7 feet from the water where 75 feet is required. That's 118.
That's supposed to be step back.
Anyway, add an addition to the general residential zoning district. Hi there.
Hi.
So, folks, please present in support of your variance request.
My name's Joseph Wilson, I'm the owner. I'm proposing to put an addition on number those. They have 11.85 acres with my house that I purchased. And the only spot I can put it on is the whole house is within 75 feet of the water. Is the fat corn. So that it was on the fat, the set back in the driveway. So I'm proposing to put the addition on that fat corn, so it's attached to the house.
Okay.
We so will.
So if you could verify criteria, if you are varying shot location, would you please? And if you need to plot, it's the groundwater.
Well, you could take balls maybe instead.
He feels the pain.
I have progressive lenses, if we can find something for you.
I just had a reason unless you get.
So you're down to begin for variance?
That's all right, I'm good.
Part four of your applications, sir.
Right, number one, conditions exist that put a little enforcement of the ordinance, without unnecessarily adding 50, they're defined in their applicable law. Propose, proposal for addition to existing dwelling. Existing dwelling mostly within the 75-foot setback. Proposed additional located in least impactful area, no septic, very voidy. And it's 53.7 feet from the lake, meaning NHDS setback. Number two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Proposal addition meets NHDS 50-foot setback. Proposal include to your control, nude drainage, filtration, drainage. And I am include showing protection permanent. Number three, granting the variance will not result in manipulation of surrounding property values. Expansion of the single-family residential area of single-family residential, no one's raising bedrooms. Number four, granting of the variance to reduce essential justice. Only one three-bedroom home with 11.85 acres with over 260 feet of lake drainage. Consideration given to ensure no impact on lake, seasonal, and plant. Number five, granting of the variance would not be contrary to public influence. Allows for full productive use of the dwelling while maintaining 53.7 feet to lay erosion and stormwater measures to be provided to ensure no impact to the water quality.
Mr. Wilson, what you read was different than what was put in the application?
I, I had my engineer.
Okay.
I was kind of doing that on the fly.
Okay.
And he had all the shore instructions.
It's, great work. Can I have one for the case file or the board? Okay. It was not meant originally, but.
I wanted to drop my eyes across my teeth. I did that application out. I was flying to Alaska.
They're like, say, I, I open a copy. Yeah.
Thank you for reading this, and I see why you needed glasses. Does anybody, in, in reference to what you've heard, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns in reference to the support of the variance that was just presented?
If somebody else would like to go down, please.
Okay. I'll need you to submit. Everyone's okay with that being submitted after the application?
But I would really like to see a copy before.
I, I feel the same way. I'd like to see it. Because I was totally lost. I couldn't find it.
I'm sorry about that.
But more is more.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, sir.
For the existence of the big, the inventory.
I forgot my glasses once I went to buy something, and I had to get my phone, looking at the phone and the last reading. And then you got the phone, and then you get the other stuff. I spent a long time getting that figured out.
Yeah.
What do you guys think of the screen? So you got to present it where you can see him in the middle, the whole board wrapped around.
I was looking at that sitting out there. It's very good.
Look, I just want to look younger and thinner on TV, so if something to make that happen.
You got to put a written request in that.
I do. Build that as a budget, sir.
Good one, John.
Still present. Mr. Bailey?
No, I'm in the same situation.
Think you could put table. That's something to do by often.
You're a military.
That is true. This is my inner thing, which I don't know. The chair, you're more comfortable here, and I don't have to worry about what is the, what about folding cable. It's over or not.
You know, I appreciate.
Thank you.
It's been a long meeting.
It was.
Hey, talk to me.
I see it's where it's the only way you could do it with the way the lot is. Oh, this is wetlands. You couldn't, you couldn't meet the buffer right here. And then there's also a septic location right there. And even, I mean, the house is right there, so if he wants to attach to the houses, where else can you put it?
So, so listen, this time, Mr. Bailey, can you guys just, for the people who may be listening in, go ahead and share your perspective.
Okay, okay.
It'll all be out in public.
So the, the, we were discussing the location of the Thomas House, and if there was any other area that could be recommended to be used other than in the infringing of the wetlands, that was, that was suggested everything. Thank you.
Okay. And it doesn't look like there is another opportunity? Is that what you've stated?
That's what I was saying. You're not going to meet the buffer for the wetlands. The septic's right there.
Based on the detailed justification for variance that was read in the copy that you have in front of you, any questions, comments, or concerns for Mr. Wilson?
The, I do.
Please.
So I see the setbacks 35 feet, six inches, which is to the stone wall, the boundary.
Yep.
You want another pair of glasses?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'm sure this is being covered because nobody else is talking about it. But that wetland that's there.
Yeah.
It is, does this include a waiver for that? It's in there?
That DES, I'm sorry, that indicates.
Should stay on here.
Carolina approved it from, from Swain's Lake.
There's a shoreline for the, for the state because of being within 250 feet of the water.
From Swain's Lake.
Shoreline permit.
So I was referencing the well and, and that's into the stone wall.
The, that is actually, it's in zoning, but it's under innovative land use. So that would be a 9.6 that would be granted by the planning board because the planning board's the one that can give waivers to the wetland buffer. So he'd get a condition, a 9.6 conditional use permit that's granted by the planning board, but it's not granted by this board.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment I have.
Yes.
Is you're sharing a well with one of the others, right?
Yeah, with the other butter to the left tonight.
Okay, and, and that's not why you're here. We're not talking about wells, but that would be in a butter concern, I guess. Okay.
I'm not adding any bedroom ceiling. Actually, get rid of my son and daughter, so.
It's a big space you're building, right? And neither here nor there, I'm just curious. I mean, you're doing 2,400 square feet. You're doing two stories, right?
It's one story. It's a pool house, meaning a pool. Like, he wrote two story on it, but it's not.
Oh, okay.
Sign, whatever you want to sign, it's one story.
Well, that goes through John anyway, when you're ready, but so it's a swimming pool.
Yeah, and, and the bed. So I'm taking the bedroom and the form that access it. I'm stepping the bedroom in here, and the swimmer pool in the back.
Sounds very nice.
I just want to be sure you realize you're on the lake.
You can't swim in the lake in January. You can go to the.
I'm sorry, I'm making a joke.
The answer to that, I have a wife.
Okay.
Okay, we understand now. You have a wife.
And I don't think, given that behind you is empty, that we have to do public comment for opposition to the application. That's it. They were not interested, so, so swimming pool. Is something about the arrangement? I don't know what that is. This addition is full house, though. Do you want to ask some questions, Mr. Bailey? Oh, so seeing as there's no more questions, comments, or concerns, I'll entertain the motion, please. Okay, we cannot leave it up to Mrs. Hawkins. If we tag someone, it's going to make a motion.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Well, I know I have to cover the five reasons why, so that takes a little thought.
Especially because the printing is really tiny.
I am trying to read it, yeah.
Yeah.
Get into words on that.
I mean, looking at it, looks.
So I, I would make a motion to accept in, in finding that there is 11.85 acres on the property, that the addition will not devalve properties on either side, that it is within the spirit of the ordinance. It is within 71.97%, I calculated. So certainly not a large change in that expansion of a single-family home in a single residential area on increased bedrooms or have a negative impact on land values in the area. So I've made a motion. Do I have a second?
That's what I was going to say. I'll second.
Exactly what I was going to say, so we have a second. In the captions, any questions or comments or concerns, I'll take a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. LaPrada.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Hard cough, aye. Variance, manager has been approved.
Remind her, saying the finding of facts.
Yes, certainly. Not a lot of ours. Can't you just like?
I hear probably, okay, okay, okay.
So. Okay, you're good. We'll get it off. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing before you is the approval of your, thank you, sir.
Thanks so much.
Enjoy that here. Review and approval of meeting minutes. Did anyone have any changes to the meeting minutes? It was an eight-minute meeting.
I wasn't here, so I have no.
You can tell that everything.
The three events that were present.
Was to approve.
Okay, can I second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I assume you two will refuse because you were at the meeting.
That's right.
Yes, okay, thank you so much. No, I think we've covered it all. Thank you. I know you had a long drive, and how we do it on time?
So we said, John?
Oh, vote for you, John.
I'll second.
Good. All in favor?
I have five reasons why we should have.
One of them is dinner.
Yeah.
We're still on.
This is great.